I'm going to call this meeting of the City Council of the Order. Do we have a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor. There are no items to report out this evening.
Okay. I'd like to ask Joe to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Here.
Councilmember Lister?
Here.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Judge?
Here.
Mayor Thomas?
Here. Are there any items for agenda review? Seeing none.
Mr. Mayor, I move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read in title only and all further reading be waived.
Second?
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
If any member of the City Council may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should declare so at this time. Seeing none.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the first item on the agenda is public statements on appointments, special presentations, and informational reports. Mr. Mayor, we have no speakers for item two this evening. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the first item on the agenda, the next item on the agenda, is item 3A1, ratification of the appointment of a representative to the Ventura County Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council. And Assistant City Manager Linda Swan is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the City Council. The Ventura County Area Agency on Aging represents the concerns of senior citizens countywide. It provides leadership, advocacy, and visibility for persons age 60 and over within Ventura County. The agency's advisory council is comprised of two representatives from each city within the county and serves to advise the agency on matters related to persons age 60 and older. Each city's council on aging executive board selects two representatives to serve two-year staggered terms on the advisory council, which are then ratified by the respective city councils and appointed to the 20-member advisory council. On May 9, 2023, the COA received the resignation of an advisory council representative whose term was to conclude on June 30, 2024. The COA invited eligible candidates from a recent recruitment to be considered for the unscheduled vacancy. On June 12, 2023, the Council on Aging voted to recommend the appointment of Susan Genova, subject to the City Council's ratification. If ratified, this will be Susan Genova's first term commencing July 18, 2023, and concluding June 30, 2024. It is a recommendation of the Council on Aging that the City Council approves and the mayor appoints Susan Genova as a representative to the Ventura County Agency on Aging Advisory Council. And if Susan is present, if you could just stand. Well, this concludes my report, and staff is available to answer any questions at this time.
Do we have any questions from staff? Seeing none. Can I get a motion? Oh, whoop. Councilmember Lister.
Oh, actually, I was just about to make the motion.
Okay, go right ahead.
I moved to ratify the appointment of Susan Genova to fill an unscheduled vacancy as one of the city's representatives to the Ventura County Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council, VCA triple A. Yes, term commencing July 18, 2023, including June 30, 2024.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 3B1, presentation of the 2023 Ventura County Fair poster by Fair Director Shante Morgan.
One of my favorite times of the year when I get to come out and promote our wonderful fair. As an East County resident myself, I love to bring it to our local cities and let you know how much we really want our citizenry from this community to come out. And so I thought I'd bring you a few highlights just to, you know, get your mouth watering and excited about coming out to the fair. So this year's fair will be August 2 through the 13th. It is a country fair with ocean air. It's been a few years since I've been here because of COVID, like all of us, but we're back and better than ever. Tickets are on sale now at venturacountyfair.org. So we have more rides than ever, three Ferris wheels. We have the largest petting zoo in Ventura County Fair's history, including a camel experience. We've got new vendors, 35% local businesses. We have collectible comic books. We have new food, okay? I know I have a friend who's recently found that they're gluten-free, so we got some gluten-free options, some vegetarian options. But what would a fair be without fried Twinkies and fried Oreos? So we've got those too. More parking, seven free parking locations, hundreds of exhibits, and entertainment this year, free, okay? Free with the admission to the fair. We've got Ashanti, Midland, Trace Atkins, Patty LaBelle, Tesla, 38 Special, Collective Soul, and more. And then, of course, our rodeo. PRSA, PRCA will return. And those shows, we've got five shows, they're bound to sell out, so you should get your tickets early if you really want to go. And of course, the world's oldest and biggest rodeo show. So we have something for everyone, and we hope that you will join us this year. We're excited, and I hope you are as well. Next, I do have a presentation we always like to... Most fair you bring over. So we try to bring a little joy and happiness, okay? So can I have?
I always look forward to seeing what new design is. So this is a contest?
Yes, yes, we have students from, yes, from throughout the county submit.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Very much.
I love your presentation.
We want to see all of you come out. It's for all the county, okay? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item four, public statements. Since there are no public hearings under Agenda Item 5 this evening, Agenda Items 4 and 6 are combined, and the City Council will hear all public statements under this Agenda Item Number 4. Agenda Items 4 and 6 are the times allotted for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments, and informational reports. Speakers will be called on in the order in which the car was submitted to speak for this public statement, item 4, for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the City Council are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Mr. Mayor, unless you have any comments, we can begin public statements.
No comments.
The first speaker is John Lapper.
Mayor and City Council, contrary to Peter Carubie's asking if someone finally punched me in the eye, to which I responded, "Look up ocular myasthenia gravis", Peter Carubie responded, "You got a boo-boo. Walmart has grab bars for you on sale." Now, on to Agenda Item 8B, the cargo containers, which I am very much against. Neighborhood Council 1 voted 9 to 2. District 2, 12-0. District 3, 9-0. And District 4, 13-0, for a total of 36 to 9. However, it may be 35 to 8. If you can't respect their dedication and input on this matter, what are the neighborhood councils there for? There were 49 code enforcement complaints since 2019. Obviously, that means there were issues. Staff even says it's hard to police cargo containers in rear yards. Why further escalate the problem? I am seeing a five-foot yard setback 10 feet from the rear or side street to have this ugly 10-foot-high monstrosity 5 feet from your neighbor is an absurdity. Who wants to look at that or wait three years for this screening from plant growth, especially during a drought? Do we need to waste water on a plant screen to hide a 10-foot-tall cargo container? There are also toxic concerns with the cargo storage containers. There are safety concerns with potential for curious kids to get trapped inside. Concerns that chemicals may be stored inside without the city's knowledge or ability to inspect. Temperatures inside can reach well over 140 degrees. They are not allowed in the city of Los Angeles, Moore Park, Oxnard, Westlake, Palmdale, South Pasadena, Agoura Hills. They are allowed temporarily in Fillmore, Santa Clarita, San Fernando, Calabasas, and Lancaster. They are allowed in T.O., Santa Paula, Santa Clara, only if architecturally approved, if blended to match the main house architecture. Simi Valley's proposal? Slap on a coat of paint on it as long as it matches the main house. Why must Simi Valley allow trashy cargo containers in backyards when all surrounding cities do not? Is that what this council wants Simi Valley to be known for? This is literally a giant can of worms that is unnecessary. Who needs a cargo storage container that can hold 600 boxes of stuff? Are we talking residential usage or commercial usage, as in business run out of their house? There are plenty of other options, especially with the tough shed market, which are safe and somewhat pleasing to the eye. Why are we allowing cargo containers from ships and trains to be placed in our residential backyards? Who is requesting this at what cost to our residential neighborhoods? Who on this City Council would be for this old painted cargo container 5 or 10 feet from their fence? The financial aspect may benefit a few, but hurt many. 49 code violations. Oops, thank you.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I would like to apologize in advance. It is not my forte to make public speeches, but I wanted to let you guys know about the work that our lab is doing currently. So the name of our company is Delta Plan Systems. We are focused on conserving water, on conserving resources, eliminating irrigation runoff and fertilizer runoff. We are currently working with the City of Glendale's Parks and Recreation and the City of Redwood's Parks and Recreation Department, along with multiple private sectors. Testing-wise, so we are able to conserve 50% of irrigation water with the polymer that our lab has developed. So that's essentially what I wanted to let the City of Simi Valley know. We are currently in talks with testing for a few golf courses that you guys have out here, so I wanted to bring it to the city's attention if it was something that we could implement with Parks and Recs with you guys. So what it is, it is a non-invasive, 100% biodegradable, non-toxic polymer. It's a soil additive that we dilute in water and directly apply to the grass. We've done extensive testing with City of Glendale and City of Redwood. We're installed at about 20,000 square feet with City of Redwood, and then about 9,000 square feet with City of Glendale currently. So I just wanted to see if we could open up a conversation, maybe with the Parks and Recs or whoever is involved with the water irrigation or water conservation with City of Simi Valley, and see if we could set up a meeting time for us to come and present further about the work that our lab is currently doing. I also brought a pamphlet for you guys to review. It has our soil report with the City of Glendale that we did testing-wise, and then we also have a packet that kind of explains the installation process and what it is. And then I can provide MSDS paperwork and all the other testing that our lab has done, and we're located in Canoga Park. So I will leave this, I don't know if I'm allowed to leave. My business card is in there and all that, so if it is something that we could facilitate a future conversation, or we would love to come out with our chemists and just meet with anyone that you guys have in the water conservation department. So that was it. Thank you.
Michael Brown?
I'm Michael Brown, 56-year resident of Simi Valley. I currently reside at 1132 Bryson Avenue. That is south of Fourth and Royal. Driving around Simi, I have noticed a lot of new asphalt. In my neighborhood, we got to be the recipients of some asphalt work. However, living on a corner, I got the best of both worlds. Friday, they did the side street, Bryson, from Catlin to Alsamo. It's a mess. It's a mess. I got with Rick, one of your supervisors or your inspectors for the city, and I explained my dilemma with him. And I says, "What really annoyed me was that I asked a representative from Toro Friday, 'Can you run a street sweeper and a water truck and get this oil up off the street?'" And he obviously just told, "Hey, it'll go away." And I'm like, "Okay, do you want this in your neighborhood?" But going back to the conversation that I had with Rick, apparently he lit a fire under their ass because they started running a water truck, a sweeper, up and down Bryson, which it did help, but the street still got left in a mess. They did a fantastic job in the rest of the area. And then what a lot of my residents or neighbors would ask is, last time Bryson from Catlin to Margot was resurfaced was over 35 years ago. I can deal with that. My issue was the mess that got left on Bryson. And like I said, they did a fantastic job throughout the rest of the neighborhood. And I also brought up to the fact that Royal Avenue from First, from Fourth to First, you can see all the oil tracks that go clear up First Street. There is a way that this can be prevented. And I'm going to go back and sit down here, but can you emphasize to these contractors that there are some residents in Simi, and I know each and every one of you will, we take a sense of pride in our community, and we don't want to see shoddy contractor work, okay? And I know you've been under the hot seat with a lot of this paving and everything else, but like I said, it is noticeable. In some of these areas, it's like, okay, how can they not leave a mess here, but they leave one in my neighborhood? Okay? So thank you.
Brian Kane?
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and Councilmembers. I am Brian Kane, a member of Neighborhood Council Number 4, and I have a couple of items that I would like to bring up tonight. Number one, I'd like to commend Public Works employee Joyce Goodwin, who is very responsive. I send her emails. I remember it was Mayor Pro Tem Mike Judge who originally gave me the pothole number. And, you know, none of us like potholes, and I figured, hey, I'm going to call him in per his instruction. And then now I've come to sending emails with, this week it was like seven or eight, six or seven, potholes, bent signs, you know, where people make a corner turn and the sign gets bent. And Joyce once said, "You know, we really appreciate your eyes and ears", but I just want to commend her. I know she has a crew behind her, you know, whose names I don't know, but they're very responsive. And I know there's bigger projects going on, and of course, I appreciate those. But just filling in potholes does a great deal to strengthen our comfort and happiness in the community. Number two, I'd like to talk about the shipping container item. It's Item 8B, as you may know. Our Neighborhood Council 4 reviewed this at the direction of the City Council, I think it was back in February or perhaps our April meeting. And our review was unanimous against expanding the use or installation of shipping containers on residential property here in Simi Valley. It's simply, you know, the many comments that came out with it, that they're not attractive, and there's all sorts of secondary things that we think they may end up being occupied by people, et cetera, at some time in the future. But notwithstanding that, we don't like the idea. And there's actually quite a bit of hostility in our discussion, saying, "We just don't, absolutely don't want this." And I understand there may be interest trying to present this as a useful item, but our citizens do not want this. And I know when I was recruited a couple of years ago to be on the Neighborhood Council, it was marketed to me that, you know, we're your eyes and ears in the community to review things and bring them to your attention. And I know right now we're recruiting again for Neighborhood Councils, and I especially implore the council here to listen to what my Neighborhood Council 4 has to say on the subject. And I thank you very much.
Joe Pachowski?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Judge, members of the City Council. Mayor Thomas, who stepped away. I trust he can hear me back in the chambers. We've seen over the years a lot of discussions about the aesthetics of our beautiful city. Residents have stood before this council and said, "We don't want our town looking like other parts of Southern California, specifically the San Fernando Valley." Our residents are concerned about the aesthetics of how our city looks. We don't allow overnight camping. In fact, one of your items tonight is going to be considering a resolution to prohibit overnight parking on both sides of Tappo Canyon, north of Presidio Drive. Why? We don't want, that's not the kind of aesthetic we want in our city. And our Neighborhood Councils have spoken loud and clear, 35 to 8 total, with three of the four Neighborhood Councils being unanimous. That was Neighborhood Council 2, Neighborhood Council 3, and Neighborhood Council 4. Yet somehow, this is still coming up again. I know, I'm actually kind of grateful. Over in Wood Ranch, our lots aren't big enough to have one of these things, but I know that if they were, I sure as heck wouldn't want to see one of my neighbors with one of them. Today was a 95-degree day again. Kid's going to get stuck inside. We've got to protect the kids. That's why this change is a bad idea. Let's just leave it the way it is, and if there's a better idea, great. Bring it back to the Neighborhood Councils, get more input, and go from there. Finally, as far as the food trucks go, I said it last time, I'll say it again. By all means, let's allow the mobile food trucks as long as they're properly licensed and regulated by the County Health Department. So let's go ahead and get that taken care of. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that was the last speaker. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next is uh consent, I mean, item four A, City Council comments regarding the public statements.
Councilmember Lister.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just I noticed that Diana's still here. Thank you for your presentation about water conservation possibilities, et cetera. Just wanted to be very clear that there isn't that that Simi Valley, um Santos Zanah Park and Recreation District is separate. They have their own board. And so you want to go talk to them specifically about the golf courses, et cetera. But that being said, we certainly Rancho Simi, I'm sorry, Rancho Simi Recreation Park.
RSRPB.
I can't, thank you. DeeDee knows. So you you definitely want to speak with them. But also, I'm sure that we can have a conversation as far as some of our um, we do a lot of um, i- i- not irrigation, but we do a lot of.
We can provide the information on our water conservation coordinator.
Very good. Perfect. So thank you for being here. And I also wanted to say to uh Mr. Brown, um, thank you for being here. And we like to hear that roads are getting improved, but certainly don't want that to be at the cost of other areas. And so I I will follow up and just make sure that that really does get swept. And the discussion about oil tracking is interesting, so one to discuss further. So thank you for your comments. And the rest, I know that we will be discussing later in the evening. Thank you for all being here.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, uh, so we will be discussing shipping containers at length today. Um, and so I'm not gonna address those right at the moment. Um, but I would do want to um compliment Brian Kane, one, because I also live in District Four. So it's, I'm glad we have great representation. Thank you. And starting with a compliment of someone always puts you in great graces. Um, and um, I have not met Joyce Goodwin, but I'm gonna make a personal point to actually reach out because uh I'm glad that you're getting good response from them. Um, Councilmember Lister covered the Parks Department. Um, yeah, so uh, other than that, I only had like a seven pirate jokes uh for Mr. Lapper, but I'm gonna I'm gonna hold those for for another time. I I hope you're feeling okay.
I'm just gonna clarify. It's Rancho Simi Recreation and Park District. They're a separate entity from the city. I'm the only one that served on the board here, so I'm the only one that says the name right. We're, I know, we're working on it. So I'm just trying to uh trying to explain that. Uh, no, Diana, that was funny. I work with a Diana Tamarian, so I had to double check when she called your name. Yes. Um, yeah, address, the city manager's gonna put you in contact with our water conservation. But then the Park District has its own set of elected officials running it. So it's, I know it's different than Glendale. We're.
Yeah, I was just thinking of this, like, I'm on.
There's only three of us in the area. There's us, Camarillo, and Thousand Oaks. We're really the only three that have separate special districts for our park districts, though. That's all. I just wanted to harass my two uh councilmembers.
Okay, well, um, Michael, thanks for your comments. Uh, you know, I know our focus has been on trying to get as many roads improved as we possibly can, as fast as we can. But at the same time, we do need to pay attention to the quality of the work we're doing. Um, and as far as everybody else, uh, I think it's been addressed, but thank you all for stepping up and saying what's on your mind. We appreciate hearing from you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item seven, the consent calendar. And there are two resolutions for your consideration this evening. Consent item seven, resolution number twenty twenty-three dash thirty-six, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley, authorizing parking prohibitions on Tappo Canyon Road from five hundred and thirty feet north of Presidio Drive to the Tappo Canyon Trail Parking Lot. And consent item eight, resolution number twenty twenty-three dash thirty-seven, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley approving acceptance of grant funds and the execution of a grant agreement, and any amendments thereto from the fiscal year twenty twenty-three twenty-four, State of California Department of Highway Patrol CHP Cannabis Tax Grant Program.
Actually, I would like just to have, excuse me, turn my mic on. Um, I would like to pull item eight just for a quick question, quick discussion.
On?
On item eight.
Eight.
Please.
Councilmember Rhodes.
And I'd like to pull four, please.
May I move to approve one, two, three, five, six, and seven?
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
All right, then let's go in order and start with consent item number four.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm in total agreement with uh signing this fiscal agreement and getting it done. But I thought it would be an opportunity to talk about our transit system briefly as we look towards this relationship with our our county partners and our own transit system. And I think that we should look at expanding the dial-a-ride program um and beyond the ADA and senior ridership, rethinking and maybe even reinventing our transportation system, uh, reducing our fixed route number of uh ri- uh trips and increasing ADA might be a better way to do it. And since the dial-a-ride system has generally recovered from the pandemic and our fixed route system is still recovering, we should take a look at, see how, if we're poised for the future with this system. Uh, but I didn't want to go too deep into it. I just wanted to put that out there, that the relationship as it is is great, but we need to be rethinking it.
So we can start looking into that with staff and.
And agenda is it a future item?
And a future item. I couldn't tell you when.
Does does that have any effect on us approving this tonight?
It does not.
It does not, okay.
So we go ahead and prove that tonight. And I think what we'll do is, we'll talk with staff about the concept and um uh be- because uh this is a federally funded program, there's lots of changes that have to happen in federal studies that need to be announced. So we can certainly start looking at that.
And I and I just wanted to share with Councilmember Rhodes, because I had some questions about this and had a very nice conversation with Mr. Fujiwaki. Um, I wanted clarity on how this was working, especially since this is a fourth time that we are approving it. It was, I didn't really understand previous to this, that we have a low, a Simi Valley do- dial-a-ride system, and this is more the regional dial-a-ride system that is being overseen by, is it MV? Um, anyway, but but also through Thousand Oaks spearheading, take it the acronym correctly. And so I did have some questions about cost effectiveness, et cetera. It it might be nice to have a nice conversation about the whole, whole, whole umbrella of our our route, of our dial-a-ride systems, et cetera. So I canker. That was it. Just, but I do think, I'm sorry, we should, I do think, though, this is, this only expands it for two years, I believe. And so I would be certainly willing to make a motion right now, or do you want to handle them both together, Mr. Mayor?
Um, independently, there's only one other one, so.
Okay.
If you want to go ahead and make a motion, we can go ahead and approve it.
I move that we approve item four.
Second.
Call for a vote.
For consent item four, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, discussion on consent item eight.
Actually, I really just wanted to recognize the good work of those who are pursuing these grants and very, and acknowledge that it's nice that we are receiving two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I understand there's a an allocation that is made, but glad that we are pursuing it. I know that we have to provide matching funds, et cetera, to to access the grant. My question, though, as I read the read the item, this grant money will allow us to do some of the DRE, Drug Recognition Expert Training in-house, that we currently only have eight DRE officers. And so my question, and Brian, you maybe know the answer to this, do we currently have someone trained that can train his peers, his or her peers, or is this, is, are we hiring someone to outside to come forward, to become certified, to be a DRE instructor? I, it was just a curiosity. I was glad to hear that we are, glad to hear that we are expanding and and cert- and training more officers to do this.
Yeah.
Didn't Sergeant Cowster broken in under?
I I did this just for you, so we could have this conversation.
Currently, we have one officer that's certified as a DRE instructor, which could help to teach the course. You go, obviously, you need more than one instructor uh to do a course. Um, but we have to get more DRE officers first to be able to, it's it's a stepping process to get them up to the level of a DRE instructor.
And so we have eight, excellent. So we have eight, and of that eight, one of them is already instructor or is an instructor.
When this grant was written, we had eight. Uh, we're currently down to six, with one of them being an instructor. Yes. So we need, we need to work on getting more DRE-trained officers and then work on getting them to the instructor level.
Excellent.
So historically, we have more than one trainer. Uh, keep in mind the way these work works, uh, that people get promoted, they move into other assignments.
And so they're not available to do the training. A good thing about our county is that we share. So if we're teaching a course, we'll have Oxnard, Ventura, and our local highway patrol station involved in training folks on our department and other depart- departments in our region. Uh, obviously, what's best is to have a good cadre within. So it allows us to be more robust in getting people trained more frequently.
Very good. Well, I thought this was excellent. Just wanted to have the conversation. So thank you for that explanation. I'm glad that needs also one vehicle provided by this grant as well.
Yes, we needed that. We're actually short on vehicles. Uh, and to explain that, we used to have a bigger uh motor cadre.
Mm-hmm.
And now we have more accident investigators. And so uh we're having to make an adjustment for that difference.
Got it. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd be happy to make the motion, but or move that we approve as item eight on the consent calendar.
Okay.
Second.
Call for a vote.
Consent eight, the motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item eight A, second reading of ordinance number thirteen fifty for city-initiated municipal code amendment Z dash S dash twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 one to revise portions of Title Nine of the Simi Valley Municipal Code to allow for type four mobile food facilities, food trucks on commercial and industrial properties, and a determination that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act as amended. The reading of the ordinance is as follows. Ordinance number thirteen fifty and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley for city-initiated municipal code amendment Z dash S dash twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 one to revise portions of Title Nine of the Simi Valley Municipal Code to allow for type four mobile food facility, food facilities, food trucks on commercial and industrial properties, and a determination that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, and staff is available for questions.
I'd be happy to make the motion.
Uh, Councilmember Lister, do you have any questions?
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
Yes, I did have a question um before the motion is made. Um, and I, I do, I just want to go on the record that I do see um the poten- the great potential value to our residents and mobile food vendors. Um, I want to make sure that we're not making a decision that might impinge on our brick and mortar. And so I know we've put quite a few things into this. For instance, it's three hundred foot setback, which is, as I understand, is what we're looking at, correct? Not the two hundred foot.
Three hundred, that's correct.
Three hundred foot. Um, and of course, we could revisit two hundred at a later date. My question, I, as I read through it, um, that it has to be three hundred feet from a coffee, excuse me, from a coffee shop or restaurant. Does that include quasi-food places, for instance, a bowling alley that's has a food section in it, or a movie theater that serves food as well? Are those included in that two hundred or three hundred foot setback?
The ordinance does not specify specifically movie theaters of that nature or bowling alleys. Some bowling alleys have restaurants in them, so that could certainly apply.
Okay. Um, and I don't know if we have to specify it specifically, but I just want to be very careful that we're not impinging our, or hurting our brick and mortar institutions. I maybe, maybe, and maybe then we should, I just want to quickly talk about the complaint process, which is item F, as I understand. So if a property owner allows a food truck, but a commercial tenant feels that they've lost customers because their parking area's been impinged on or something, um, then there is a review complaint process, as I understand it. Can you just explain that?
If a complaint was received, we would evaluate that permit, which is a one-year permit. If it's, if it's found that there's a violation involved of the ordinance, they would have to remedy that violation in order to uh continue. And it also could affect their, any potential renewals. Um, the uh, the permit is based on a location within a planned development permit boundary, so they also have to get permission from that property owner. Uh, within that, say, shopping center boundary or industrial park boundary of that development permit. Um, if it's just a matter of um, someone losing business and adjoining uh property, that would have to be beyond three hundred feet. Uh, there's not a whole lot uh the ordinance does to remedy loss of business. So that's not part of the ordinance.
So if a property owner gives them permission, a a food vendor to park in an area, and one of his other tenants, after the fact, felt that maybe their parking has been now been compromised, or maybe their food sales has been diminished, can they complain after, at that point? Is is that part of the complaint process we're talking about?
No, that would not be part of the complaint process we would remedy. It's just whether if they comply with the three hundred foot radius, if they comply with the design standards of the eight hundred square foot area where they could establish that they comply with the signed ordinance, but a loss of um capitalism or one sells better than the other brick and mortar, that's not part of our ordinance. We don't regulate taste.
Is, okay, thank you. And one question that just popped in my mind that I haven't thought about, is it expected that potentially these um food trucks will, would negotiate a rent payment to the to the landowner? Is that, is that allowed, or that's not even discussed in this?
That's, that's between the landlord and the tenant.
So potentially, this is a, a landowners, could be in a way that they increase revenue on their property by allowing a food truck or in a, in a sense, they're allowed to rent a new area of their, of their commercial or industrial space that heretofore was not rentable?
Yes, it's pretty much expected. If you're allowing someone to park in your property for extended, extended period of time, you may expect a transaction for that.
Got it. Okay, just confirming. Thank you.
May I make a motion, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to adopt ordinance number one three five zero.
Second.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item eight B, second reading of ordinance number thirteen fifty-one to consider city-initiated municipal code amendment Z dash S dash twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 two to amend portions of Title Nine of the Simi Valley Municipal Code to allow cargo containers to be used for residential accessory storage, and a determination that the amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. The reading of the ordinance is as follows. Ordinance number thirteen fifty-one and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley for city-initiated municipal code amendment Z dash S dash twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 two to amend portions of Title Nine of the Simi Valley Municipal Code to allow cargo containers to be used for residential accessory storage, and a determination that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, and staff is available for questions.
Any questions of staff?
I don't have questions, but do we want to discuss this in any way?
I'm assuming we do.
Okay.
Who would like to begin? Who would like to begin?
Just like I said before, this is a property rights issue. I don't consider anything more than that. Aesthetics, whatever. We have a lot of things in our town that people can do to their property that other people aren't going to like, and we don't have a problem with that. We don't have a problem with having twenty-one-foot buildings that they call storage sheds on your property. That can be secured just as well as these storage containers can to lock people in or lock people out. The storage containers that are sold today are basically inexpensive alternative for people with large lots. That has to be specified because these aren't going on your normal house lots. These are going on large lots in our city. Whereas I look at the neighborhood council rebuttal. There was so many people against, so many people for. The people that are for are probably the ones, if you do that by percentages, the same percentage of those kind of lots in our cities that will be able to accommodate these storage containers. So there's no difference, in my opinion, between this storage container and, say, a tough shed. If they're painted and matched to the house, they're set nicely, and they're put in a position where you really should be looking over your neighbor's fence anyways. Secondly, they're cheap. That's why people want these. It's not because they're better, they're better secured and they're cheap. They're easy to install. They come in, they come out. Whereas a tough shed usually, if you don't know how to do it yourself, if you're not so constructually savvy, you don't really build by yourself. You have to hire somebody to do it. So they cost twice as much as these storage containers. Storage containers are a cheap, easy way for people to store things. And everybody says, there was a couple of comments I heard, oh, what are they going to use these for? They're going to store boxes, they're going to store this? Well, let me tell you what happens when your kids move back into your house because they can't afford a house in California. You have to have a place to put their stuff. And one of these storage containers is the perfect place to put their stuff. So that's all I'm arguing for. We are not an HOA. The neighborhood council is not an HOA board. So please, just the property rights, the people that have these sized lots that want to put something like this on, let them do it. I don't see a big rush for these things to happen. Most of the people that have these sized lots, if you drive around our town, already have them on their lots.
Anyone else? Councilmember Rhodes?
So I wanted to, on the neighborhood council issue, there's a difference between giving input and being heard and having a result and not being heard at all. Let me explain. There were huge concerns when this was brought to the neighborhood councils about what are the restrictions? What would it look like? How would it be implemented? I think a lot of those concerns were addressed. Our planning commission put forward some restrictions on them that made them more palatable if people are going to do it. But I also wanted to put some numbers to the scope of this. I'd like to say I did the research, but I didn't. I asked for the, for the numbers. This would, this ordinance would apply to about one thousand six hundred and fifty parcels in our city, and that makes up about just less than six percent of all the single-family homes. Less than six percent. I live on one of those lots, and so do my neighbors. So that's three of the sixteen fifty. And nope, I don't really want my neighbor to put one in, but I also don't want him to be able to say that I can't or the city to say that I can't. So in that property rights issue, I'm there. The concessions that neighborhood council shared with their concerns and planning commission included that they be on a concrete pad. So if you're going to put one in, you got to put it on a pad. They, they cannot be fitted with plumbing, electrical, or be inhabited. Now, if someone did want to inhabit a shipping container and convert one to an ADU, completely different ordinance. That's not what we're dealing with here. They would have to go through a permitting process and say, this is what we are going to do. And the city would either approve or disapprove that ADU addition. And setbacks and screenings so that it's at least reasonably aesthetically, you know, of a similar color and covered. And nothing can be on top. And despite what someone said of ten-foot, that's, that's actually inaccurate. It's a nine-foot container. So with those concessions and it really only affecting less than six percent of the parcels in our city, I'm, I'm on the side of the property rights with some reasonable considerations that say, if you want to do that in your yard, that is up to you. But at least make it not so intrusive on your neighbors.
Which one of us do you want next?
All right, Councilmember Litzler.
Okay, thank you. I understand the importance of property rights and the freedom to use one's properties they best see fit. I think property rights are very important. However, as a city, we have the responsibility to make sure that the property that our city has designed in such a way that the entire community is comfortable and benefited. We restrict certain uses for the benefit of the whole committee, whole community. And some of those restrictions that we've placed can be anything from building setbacks. We restrict where vehicles can be parked. We're still having that discussion. The reality is, is that we have that responsibility. We even restrict fireworks, which I happen to love. But anyway, there are lots of restrictions that we place on property owners. But we want to be wise and judicious as we do that. And so the question is, are there aesthetic issues? Are there health and safety issues? Are there any reasons why there should be a restriction placed on this instance? And I certainly read the reports. There's both sides saying they can be made to look attractive, some who feel that they are aesthetically displeasing, et cetera. I chose to attend Neighborhood Council three this week, this past week, because I was newly assigned to represent Neighborhood Council three, and I liked to show up the first time. When I arrived, a couple of minutes late, I confess, board members were leaving because there were not enough members in attendance to have a full quorum. And so the decision was made to cancel the meeting and then reconvene next time. But several, but two of the council members, or two of the neighborhood council members, were walking out, and so I had a fun opportunity to visit with both of them. And interestingly enough, they asked me, what have we decided about our metal storage containers? And I explained to them, well, that hasn't been decided. It's going to be on tonight's agenda. And they reminded me that both of them were strong proponents of individual property rights, and both of these women are. But that their neighborhood council had voted unanimously against allowing these metal permanent storage containers, the type that you see on trains and boats, et cetera. And so, and I think as you read the neighborhood comments, there, there were some legitimate issues. I recognize and I appreciate our planning commission for trying to mitigate some of that, but I don't think they go away completely. And maybe because I used to serve on the neighborhood council way back when, and I know what great work they do, I think that, I feel that in this instance, they made a good, good representation, a reasoning for why we should not change our code at this time and allow for, for these containers. I recognize that there are some containers already out there, and some of them are being done nicely. In fact, I even had an interesting conversation with a city employee this afternoon about the very issue. And, and he was sharing about this lovely container in his neighborhood that is there and, and well, et cetera, well-placed and landscaped. The discussion that he and I had, which was interesting, is that, as I understand the enforcement of this, it's not proactive. We don't immediately say, okay, anyone that has a container, you are illegal. And we're going to come and find you and find you if you don't get rid of it. I don't, maybe I shouldn't be saying this publicly, but that's my understanding. That it will, so we're basically saying, no, they're not allowed, but it will be handled, complaints will be dealt with as they come forward. And maybe I should ask our, whether that is accurate. Is that an accurate assessment?
It's on a complaint basis at this point.
It's on a complaint basis at this point?
Right.
Got it. Thank you. Anyway, I guess going back to what I was saying, though, I am supportive of the work of our neighborhood council. I don't see a need at this time to change what we currently have. And for those reasons, I will not be voting for ordinance thirteen fifty-one.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a lot of mixed decisions and comments and such in this regard. The number one being property rights. Yes, everybody has a right to their property. But this is probably a negative in some people's view. But I look at it as the fact that you bought the property. You already knew what the ordinances were when you bought the property. So we're not changing it to the negative. We're just not changing it to the positive for somebody that wants a container. It's the same as if you bought a house next to a school, and then you complained about the kids crying or the kids laughing. That's just my, that's my personal opinion. When you, when you purchased your property, you knew you could not have a container on it because that's currently where, where we stand. So we're not really infringing on their property rights. But I would, as a caveat to that, like to offer the possibility of a CUP for these. Is that what we currently do or not at all? Okay. So a CUP, you would have to notify your neighbors, correct? And then your neighbors would be able to possibly offer their comments and/or concerns? Is that not, is that correct?
If the council wanted to allow them with the CUP, you, we would do it with that caveat that.
Okay. I was somewhere in the report, I was kind of looking at something along those lines.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure. So in looking at the neighborhood council numbers, they are overwhelmingly against allowing these free use throughout our community. And I think their concern is probably mine is we are going to lose a little bit of control once we allow it without any type of monitoring. And be, that's where my concern would be is if we say, yes, we allow it. Yes, it has to be on a twenty thousand square foot lot, but somebody over here has a nineteen thousand five hundred square lot, and they're putting one on. I, I just think it might get taken advantage of a little bit unless we put a little bit more oomph behind it. In other words, you have to work for it a little bit more. That, that's kind of where I'm coming from. I do like to listen to the neighborhood councils. We had, I'm neighborhood council one, actually, District One. And my council actually decided for it once all the stipulations were in place. But then the other three did not. So I'm kind of going with the majority of the people. I'm looking at, I do have, I know I have some large lots in my district. I know you have large lots in four. We probably have some in most of the districts, you know? So it's probably evenly spaced out. So I'm not in favor of this blanket approach to it. I would much prefer a streamlined, per-case decision-making if we're going to go that way in the future. Those are my comments.
Okay, so Councilmember Rhodes, you mentioned it was about, what, sixteen hundred and fifty homes that are twenty thousand square feet or more? My guess is an overwhelming majority of those reside in HOAs. Probably quite a bit of those are located up in the horse property area. And I know that, living in one of those areas, I know that in order to do it, in my neighborhood, it would go through the HOA. You'd have to get the approval of both neighbors on each side. And then at that point, it would have to be, also be approved by the city. So I, I don't know that it's that easy to do, but I, I do like the idea that there's some type of a process they have to go through to do it. If we're gonna, if we're gonna approve it in any way, shape, or form, I would like to have some, some type of process involved where they have to submit an application and get it approved, whether it involves neighbors or whatever. I, I'm open to discussion. I'm not sure what options there would be there.
Let me just make sure. Sean, as proposed, or as proposed, it's by right, so they wouldn't have to apply for a CUP to get a cargo container. Is that correct?
The review process is a zoning clearance, which must be obtained from the planning office. To make, we would review the container to make sure it complies with all the regulations, the site, the setbacks, placement colors, et cetera.
Placement pad, et cetera.
Pads, but their, the zoning clearance does not include neighborhood, neighbor confirmation.
Okay. Thank you.
So just to be clear, Sean, it's a permit process. There, there has to be a pad, there has to be setbacks, there has to be the right lot size. And the container has to be an approved container before they can slap it down on their yard.
Yes, this is a zoning clearance process where they have to submit the materials and evidence that they comply with the code, or they will comply with the code.
Well, seems like we have a little bit of a spread of opinion here.
I'll move the ordinance, and we'll see how many votes we get. So I move to adopt ordinance number thirteen fifty-one.
Call for a vote.
The motion passes with Councilmembers Kavanaugh and Litzler voting no. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item ten A, city council member reports.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been a long time since our last meeting, but I spent a lot of that time out of the country. Let's see. On Thursday, July sixth, I attended the SCAG general meeting and my committee meeting with them, as well as the Clean Power Alliance. And, let's see, at Clean Power Alliance, we voted to approve a couple of funding measures. Here's an interesting tidbit about the Clean Power Alliance. They ask us to vote on contracts while the terms of the contract are redacted. And they do that so that the redacted version goes into the public record and so that they cannot tell their competitors what they've negotiated with the current contract. Another council member from a city out here in Ventura and I arrived early to the meeting and asked to see the, the unredacted contracts so that we could see the terms that we would actually be voting on. And it turns out, they're great negotiators, and it was a good contract. But we both walked away with the distinct feeling that we were the first two council members in the entirety of the Clean Power Alliance that asked to see the unredacted versions. And to that extent, our city is doing well with them, but I'm trying to make them a better business. Let's see. On July thirteenth, I went to the swearing-in ceremony for some new sergeants, which I'm very excited about. Especially, in my opinion, knowing now Sergeant Colado. It was great to see him promoted, but it's going to be interesting to see who we get as a replacement in the schools. And on Friday, the fourteenth, I went to the chamber breakfast and was able to see our city represent well with Linda Swan talking about the state of the city and all the good things that are going on. And then a great presentation by Mr. Tinker about our libraries and what's going on there. And so we were represented extremely well. And my only other side note, on July eleventh, my father celebrated his ninety-eighth birthday, and I got to go up over the weekend and spend some time with him on that. And that's the end of my report.
Councilmember Litzler?
Thank you, Mayor. June twelfth was the last time we met. So if I have my calendar incorrect, it's been about a month of things to discuss. I will tell you, the first two weeks, I attended a family reunion, which we call cousin camp in Idaho, and a harp and worship conference in Texas. So the first two weeks, I was not about the city business. However, I did return on June twenty-seventh. It was a delight to attend Simi Sunset Rotary Club's gifting. In fact, I believe former President Mike Court is even here in the audience, if I see him back there. And it was a delight to see him in action and to see all of the funds that have been raised to support our local entities. And I started to make a list, and it was so long, I know I will leave some of them out. So I won't say, but it must have been ten, twelve different, well-deserved. out, so I won't say, but I, it must have been 10, 12 different, well-deserving organizations in our community. So thank you for what you do, your club did, and I know all of the Rotary Clubs have something similar, and this was the time of distribution. So that was great to attend. On the 30th, I had the distinct fun of attending Reagan, Reagan's Leadership Program up at the Reagan Library, and I was invited to be a community mentor. And basically, it meant sitting down with some of their participants and listening to their desires and ways that they are going to improve our community. And they came up with very great ideas, so I listened to several, arranged everything from improving school lunch offerings, because that was important for help, to, the second one had to do with a way to stimulate better books in high school libraries so that people would want to read. And the third one was a, was a desire to work more with our grocery stores to gather food for the homeless and for our food pantries. And so I was delighted that these are high school students who are having these ideas and plans going forward. That was on the 30th. On, maybe I should be, maybe I should look at my calendar, so I've got my dates correct. On Friday, June 30th, I attended with Mayor Pro Tem Judge, the grand opening of Simi Sports Cards. I didn't realize what a big business that is and how delightful that we have this business in our community. And it's there on Arringer, and I hope that they do well. It was good to be there for their ribbon cutting. Of course, July 4th, we celebrated our independence on Tuesday, July 4th, and that was a, a very fun day for me. I went to the Reagan Library and participated in all of the festivities they have for families. You have no idea all the fun things they have, from, from building Lincoln Log structures to throwing water balloons, to listening to bands, to the unveiling of a beautiful, beautiful statue of Sally Ride. It was just a lovely morning. And then that evening, of course, our own city and park system and the Kiwanis put together a fabulous fireworks display. It was, it was really beautifully done, and it was lovely to join all of my fellow council members and mayor on the stage with Justin Hunsaker to celebrate our freedoms and to ring in that celebration. So that was, so thank you for the city for that support and for all that was done, and particularly for the Rotarians, excuse me, for the Kiwanis for making that so successful. On Thursday, I too attended the SCAG Energy and Environment Meeting. It was interesting, just a couple of things that came out of that meeting. We had representative from FEMA talking about, well, a lot of the conversation was about nature-based solutions for planning and built-in resilient infrastructure. And so FEMA actually has grants that they want people to be aware of. We think of FEMA as the group that responds to natural disasters, they come in and make things right. But they are trying to be proactive, not just reactive. And so actually, there are some federal grants now for infrastructure improvements that will help become more resilient, so they don't have to come in after the fact. And so I want to be sure that we, as a city, are looking at that and possibly taking advantage. Interesting statistic I learned from David Sim, who is the Resource Specialist of Metropolitan Water District, who was talking about some of their plans for water conservancy. But he made the, the statement, Southern California has the highest precipitation variability in the nation. Now, I found that interesting. I, I'm not sure where he gets that from, but if we have, but I think certainly our wet winter would attest to the high precipitation variability. But all that says is we need to really be planning because you can't count on anything as far as the weather in Southern California. So that was July 6th. On Tuesday, July 11th, I attended the grand opening of Mako, which is a, on Easy Street, it's a new auto body shop, painting, et cetera, and two excellent new owners have, have gone into business and hope that we can support them. On Wednesday, July 12th, I also want to thank the city and the chamber. I attended the Business Resource Forum, held here at the library. And I will preface what I have to share about that, in that the tape is available, and anyone who owns a business or knows a business owner would find something of help that was in that, in that conversation. I will say that I went there initially not as a council member, but I went there as a small business owner because I wanted to know things that maybe would help my business. And Councilmember Kavanaugh will appreciate all of EDC's participation in the event. Vivian Vasquez of EDC Workforce, she spoke about some of their free programs, their computer basics courses for, for training workers, for better, to build their digital skills, and some of the, of the training programs, which are excellent. Tiffany Hunsberger talked about how help that can be received for business planning and particularly for access to capital. And I appreciated all of the information she shared there. She did speak about Simi Valley's $1 million revolving loan program and promoted that, but there are other programs that businesses might be eligible for. And I appreciated her information that if you get their assistance and qualify for a loan, very possibly your rates will be as low as 5.25%. But basically, they're as good, if not better than bank rates. And as she explained, if you are not bankable, this is the place to go. Go to them first before you go to Loan Shark, basically. So that was, she had an excellent presentation. Anthony Tony Elliott, or Tony Elliott, basically spoke about ERC credits. I think he was with, I think he was also with EDC. Kirsten Vassi of Moore Park College talked about subsidized internships. All businesses can have interns for free, train them, and they receive credit. And she just had some great resources for, for companies. And then Cynthia Avia of the Workforce Development Board talked about America's Job Center, which we have one here in Simi Valley at the top of Madera, which I think someday it'd be good to have them give a presentation about all that they do up there so that we are better informed. But anyway, just a wealth of knowledge for employers, and employees for that matter. And it is taped, I believe, open to anyone on, through the Chamber of Commerce, so I would encourage people to go and view that tape. I found it very helpful. The one final thing maybe I will mention is on Thursday, July 13th, I was invited to tour the, the site that's right next to Brandeis, Enzo Verde Site. Enzo Verde is the group that's coming in to develop the, a beautiful senior living community that's at the top of Tampa Canyon, right next to Brandeis. And I have not been to that property too recently. They have put up beautiful fencing already, and they've really cleaned it up beautifully. And obviously, they have a long ways to go. We walked the property, they showed their, their plans, what they're hoping to accomplish. But anyway, it was, it was a very interesting morning and to see what potentially could be there as something that could benefit our community, it was, it was very good. And so, anyway, happy summer to all. It's good to be back, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was nice to have a month off. It really was. Whether you do a lot or you do a little bit, it was just kind of nice to have a little bit of downtime and for the city manager to go on vacation. So I had to throw that in there. I did want to, one comment real quick. I'm very happy that, that we had somebody, the Fair Director this year come in and bring the, the, the Fair poster. And I don't know if everyone's aware that they always choose that from a student throughout the county, and it's always kind of nice to see what they come up with. I think this young lady's from Thousand Oaks, if I remember correctly. I, I thought I remembered it, the winner this year being from Thousand Oaks, I'm not positive, but congratulations. And I always enjoy going to the fair, so. On Tuesday, June 13th, I had my Economic Development Collaborative Board meeting, and we actually had it at Meisner Filtration, which is a business in Camrio. Chris Meisner is on the board, and he's now an international business. If you want to see a business that took off after COVID, this gentleman's business, they do filtration, they make everything you need to make medicine except the actual medicine. So not just filters, but all the equipment and the machinery, and I mean, they've done wonderfully with that business, and it's a family-owned and operated, which is really nice. And he's a very big supporter in the community and for EDC. But what I wanted to say is, I am the chair this year of the EDC, and they are making me look good. We got our second award already, and I haven't done anything. But Dr. Ray Bowman is the head of our SBDC, so the Small Business Development Center. He received a national presidential award for his work, him and his team, on the SBDC. And so we actually had it presented via Zoom during that meeting. So it was very, very exciting. We got an E flag, which they only hand out like six a year. So it was very, very exciting for the EDC and for Dr. Ray Bowman. We're very proud of him. We don't brag too much because we don't want somebody to steal him. But I, Ray, Ray does a really great job, so. So congrats to him and to the EDC. And, let's see. My mom's birthday was June 23rd, but she's only 82, so. Sorry, Mom. Oh, I did want to remind everybody, if you haven't seen the Facebook posts and other ads, Ventura County Animal Services has lots of kittens, so feel free to go and grab a kitten or even a dog. Watch the ads, a lot of times we have free weekend adoptions for different animals. They had guinea pigs, kittens, and something else this time, it was pretty quick. Guinea pigs, aren't those cute? We're gonna get you one, Fred. Miley, your dog will love a guinea pig, wouldn't she? So, and I did want to, this is on a personal note, my air conditioner went out July 2nd, you know, who can believe that, right? But shop local, that's all I can say, is, you know, using, using local contractors and being able to call up somebody and say, hey, I need this done, and having them come out right away really works. And support Simi, shop Simi, that's always been a big thing. We did not have our EDC Board Meeting, Executive Board Meeting on July 5th. We didn't have a quorum. Imagine that, there weren't enough people the day after the holiday to, to have a meeting. But on July 4th, I also did want to talk about that. My Rotary Club used to do the July 4th Firework Show for years, so for like 25 years straight, I worked that Fourth of July Firework Show. So a few years ago, when we stopped doing it because we just couldn't get enough volunteers and it became too, too much for us to handle, I had to a couple of years off. Well, I felt guilty, and I was talking to Kathy Van Etten and Kiwanis, and I said, I should really volunteer. And boy, I was signed up faster than you could twirl a pencil. So I actually worked two shifts, got my volunteerism in at the Fourth of July, had a great time. It was a lot of fun, sat next to John Tolson, one of our, Chair of our Planning Commission on one of the events. And then again, like Councilmember Litzter said, at the end of the, the last song of the evening, Justin Hunsinger had all of us up there with him, the entire city council was there, as well as a couple of veterans and such, and our own veteran, Mike Judge. And we all got to hang out on the stage with him while he sang his last song right before the fireworks started. So it was a great turnout, people were enjoying themselves, it was nice, clean, good old American fun. Law enforcement was there doing a good job, walking around being friendly, chief always does a good job about that. And that is it for my report.
Thank you. All right, let's see here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was a lot of stuff that went on since our last council meeting. I'll make it brief. Thursday, June 15th, I attended the SE Fire, Wildfire Mitigation Plan Update over in Thousand Oaks. I'm not too much new to report from there, make sure if you're in an area where you have to do weed abatement, that you get it done, otherwise the fire district will be looking to give out fines, so make sure you get your weed abatement done. Edison's working really hard to upgrade all their facilities so that they, you know, don't have any more wildfires started by their equipment. So they are doing their due diligence, trying to get that done. Friday, June 16th, I attended the grand opening of Simi Valley Bargain Bins over behind Donut Queen. Neat little place, if you haven't been over there and you need something, household items like soap, shampoos, they sell all that kind of stuff at really cheap prices. Check it out. On Thursday, June 22nd, I attended swearing-in ceremony for our police department. We had, I think, five, five new officers, yep, five new officers that did a great job on our, our police department's part in getting new recruits in our, in our, on our streets. On Wednesday, June 29th, I got to attend my first SCAG executive, I don't know what EAC, I'm trying to remember what that means. It was a retreat for the exec, because I'm the vice chair of the Transportation Committee. It was neat going to that because you get to see how the sausage is made behind the screen and everything that goes on to put what SCAG does. The good news about that was that our county, through VCTC and their staff of VCTC, which is great, by the way, ended up getting our county about $5 million in federal and state monies for infrastructure projects that VCTC has planned all over the county, not just in, not just in West County this time, it's going to be all over the county. Okay, so on Friday, June 30th, I finished up the SCAG EAC retreat, ran back over here for the grand opening of Simi Sports Cards, where I saw Councilmember Litzter. Again, neat little business, I'm big into collectibles, not so much baseball cards and stuff like that, but other kinds of collectibles. So if you're into that kind of stuff, check them out, they're over there in the shopping center with Elvira's and 7-Eleven and Round Table Pizza, used to be there in that area. Go check them out, they're, it's a neat little place. Remember, like Councilmember Kavanaugh said, shop Simi first, if you can. Tuesday, July 4th, I was honored to be brought up on stage by Justin at the last song of the July 4th celebration. Kiwanis, yes, I concur, did a great job putting on this Fourth of July, I was very proud of them, it was awesome. Firework show was great, always is, this time it was a little bit better. Again, we're a lot of happy people there, I always love seeing Simi Valley on the Fourth, it's very, very patriotic. On Thursday, July 6th, I attended the SCAG Regional Council and Transportation Committees, where I found out about getting that money for the county, which was awesome. Friday, July 7th, I attended the VCTC meeting over in Camrio, where, again, talked about the money we got, so we're very happy about getting that money. And Thursday, July 11th, was my wife Sarit's birthday, happy birthday, hon. That day, I couldn't go to the grand opening of Mako because I made a special trip over to our Noontime Rotary Club to see its new president installed, which happened to be our one and only council member, Rocky Rhodes. So congratulations, Rocky, on becoming the president of the Simi Valley Rotary Club. On Friday, July 14th, I attended the COC Breakfast, and I concur with Rocky that Linda did a great job representing the city, talking about all the good stuff we're doing here in the city. I've had a couple of emails from people about our, our first-time homebuyer loan program. If you're into, if you need something like that, make sure you contact the city and look into it, it's a very good program, and highly recommend it, and I highly recommend it to anybody trying to do that right now. I keep having to repeat this to folks, and I know most people understand, but the city of Simi Valley does not build housing. We zone for its construction, we can't build, and right now, the market is such that nobody, not too many people anywhere are building housing. The housing that we have going on was contracted a long time ago and planned a long time ago. That's the stuff that's coming on board right now, the stuff that's been approved in the last five years, or the last three years, I should say, you know, you'll be lucky if you see that stuff going into construction in the next seven years, because the prices are just through the roof right now, rates and equipment and rates and equipment, and all the building materials are just horrendously expensive. And again, housing prices are not driven by the city of Simi Valley, they're driven by the market. It's unfortunate, but that's just the way it is. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Okay. Monday, June 12th was our last council meeting, and at that meeting, Mr. Sorkin came and pitched the idea of his firm providing advertising on our buzzes, and I was curious about it for one reason, I wanted to learn more about it because I wanted to see if it was an option for us to provide free advertising to our community groups for the events that they put on. So I thought it would be a great way for them to market the events in the community rather than just trying to put small signs on street corners. I don't know that it was the perfect fit, but it, it prompted the idea to me to pursue that further, you know, down the line as a possibility of something that maybe the city could provide as a, at a fee to the organizations in town to help them advertise these events, because they do benefit the community. On Friday, June 16th, I also attended the grand opening of Simi Bargain Bins, and yeah, definitely jam-packed with good deals. Wednesday, June 21st, I met with our local representative from Southern California, Edison, to, as a follow-up to some training I attended down at their facility, and to talk about an upcoming event, and just to get my take on, on where things were at with the city and what questions I had. And then later that day, I participated in the Chamber Economic Development Committee meeting. On Thursday, the 22nd, attended the Simi Valley Tourism Committee meeting. And then that evening, I was asked to speak at the Simi Valley Moore Park Republican Women's Monthly Event about the city, which I did. On Friday, June 23rd, I attended the 150th Anniversary Kickoff Celebration of the Ventura County Museum, and it was a Museum. And it was pretty much a who's who of Ventura politics down there. Tuesday, June 27th, I also attended the Rotary of Simi Sunset Awards Dinner, which I also want to point out the fact that, under Mike's leadership, they, they raised and gave away more money than they ever have this past year. So that was really impressive. On Thursday, June 29th, I attended a 7:30 AM meeting at CSU Channel Islands with the president of Southern California Edison and all the mayors of Ventura County. A roundtable discussion about what our concerns were, and a talk about the future. Not a whole lot, other than, the interesting part, the takeaway for me was, he broached the subject on, you know, the state's plans on, on moving us to, you know, electric vehicles, and what the demand would be to accomplish that. And at the same time, their own, their own agenda within that timeframe is to get to the point where they're providing electricity 100% clean. I'm not sure exactly how they plan on doing that. But in their estimation, the, just for the distribution of the electricity that would be required on what they anticipate for 2035, they're talking about a $30 billion investment. And mildly concerned about that was, well, then that sounds to me like it's going to translate into $30 billion worth of additional fees. Yeah. Let's see here. Did not go to that. Attended 4th of July celebration at Rancho San Luis Obispo, and it was a great event. And it was, everybody was having a great time. It's a great event. I was amazed how many people were in that park, not only in the park, but around the park. And great program. And again, the five council members up on the stage for the final song before the fireworks, that was, that was really nice. Thursday, July 6th, I had a meeting with the Director of the Samaritan Center, gave me an update on, on the services that they do. I happened to be there that day. And that, one of the things that they do that I was not aware of, is providing food to homeless-at-risk families that are currently in their home, but are potentially at risk of becoming homeless. And the volume of food that they distribute on those days is just amazing. I mean, hundreds, hundreds. Big boxes full of food. And anyway, the programs they do, and there was some of the homeless customers there that day. I talked to a few of them. And it was a real, everything was positive. And there was just volunteers everywhere, and volunteers that had been there for a long time. And it was, it was a good experience. She also pitched me on an idea she has for the future, which she's going to broach the subject city on, but I can't really discuss it. And then, the following day, I left on vacation and just got back. So that is it for my report.
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick couple, an addendum and an announcement.
Go right ahead.
I forgot that our chamber put on their Legislative Affairs Committee on June 28th. And, and I, I appreciate so much what they do in terms of keeping us informed of the potential legislation that's coming down. Some of it not good for the city. I actually zoomed in from, from China, and it was basically midnight there, but it was worth it. I just didn't turn on my camera. And then the announcement sort of related is, this Thursday, three of us up here, yourself, myself, and Mr. Casares, we're going to be speaking at the Military Museum on things like, how do you battle the state, and things like SB9. So it's an open invitation for breakfast up there at 7:30 at the Military Museum.
Thank you. Councilmember Litzter.
Thank you. Got the button pushed. I really, thank you. I recognize too, one item that I think it is important for people to know. I too failed to neglect to mention one thing, that as the Chair of VCOG, when we met this past Thursday, it was announced, and we discussed that we did receive a $500,000 grant from the CPUSC to basically form the Joint Power Alliance that, that we are forming with, with EDC, with, under our umbrella, and also with, it's a collaborative, with, with the internet providers, basically, which, and this Joint Power Alliance will basically, with the county's blessing, will allow for us to provide internet access to all areas of the county, and to be, and, and really to reach all, everyone with quality internet. And that's important. Of course, Simi Valley is doing some great things for our residents. Not all other communities have that, and there are some obscure communities that are, that will be missing out. And so this Joint Power Alliance will allow us to go forward. And what's significant about this is, it was, to receive the grant money, we applied some time ago. We received it, we were the last, second to last one. They actually delayed it, second to last one to receive it. There were 20 or 30 other applicants who came in after the fact that did not receive the funds. So we're pleased that Ventura County will, and VCOG specifically, will be part of this Joint Power Alliance. And you'll see, we're now eligible to work and get federal funds, et cetera, and oversee this internet, last mile, middle mile, performance throughout the state. So that, that was exciting. Just wanted to announce that as well.
Okay, thank you. All right. So with that, I am going to ask for any future agenda items.
Mr. Mayor, I have one I'd like to bring up.
Yes.
I'm concerned about what we might have happening in our future here in our city, in a couple of neighborhoods, basically. I'm looking at the Alaska Track and the Texas Track specifically. And I want to bring up to the City Council something back, that either the city can do a study on, or I'd like to know it's two things, whether it can be done, and its legality, about having some kind of a parking permit process for the people that already live in the neighborhoods I mentioned, the Alaska Track, Texas Track. In other words, no overnight parking unless you're a resident of those neighborhoods, to try to help also keep people out of those neighborhoods, like we did on Tappo Canyon and the Consent Calendar tonight, but on a larger scale. Obviously, this would involve signs in the neighborhoods and parking permits issued to the people that live there. So I'm just like, something like that to come back to the council in the future.
I'd second that.
Anything else? Okay. Well, with that, I'm gonna call, and during this meeting, thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. Have a nice week.